Maybe in your email already, this announcement of a groundbreaking on the Hotel Conference Center, looks like that. It's probably dropped in your box at some point. It's called the Main Event, it's on Main Street, the Hotel Conference Center, and you'll hear more about that. But we had to go ahead and announce the groundbreaking date because it took some time to get the governor to give us a date where he could be here. And so we locked, once that got locked in, there just wasn't any time to do anything other than it's May 22nd, it's a week from now. So the invitations are late getting out anyway. And so what, the invitation says to come to this groundbreaking event, and the governor will be with us as well as Mr. Thompson and his group, and there, he has invited a big crowd, a big crowd, and he is, of course, footing the bill for all of this, but he wants to have a really big, big event. That is at 4:30, the official groundbreaking is at 4:30, the invitation is for that. And then afterward Tuesday, they'll have some music and some food and drink. But in advance of that, what we would like to do is schedule a briefing for the council, and obviously we'd have to open it to the press at like 3 o'clock. So we can, so he can fully brief the council on the design, what's incorporated in the facility as well. And if 3 o'clock works for you, then we'll tell you the place. But on next Tuesday, we're actually going to vote on the budget, the 20th. So it just occurred to me that by Thursday, y'all probably would still be here and not be taken off from Memorial Day. So unless Terry, I don't know, but the 22nd is-
So the 22nd is next Tuesday?
Thursday.
Is next Thursday.
Ah. That's not good.
What time?
It's at-
3:00.
I know, the briefing's at 3:00, the groundbreaking's-
And the groundbreaking's at 4:30.
Okay.
You know, if your schedule allows you to come to the briefing, that's fine. If it doesn't, we'll schedule another time to go through all of this. I was actually going to suggest that if you've got, if you could come there at 2:00, then maybe you could meet me and, and we could walk through the Slover Library, which is really very exciting. And, you know, if those of you who can, and we'll try to coordinate it with you, but, and maybe, of course, you're invited to all of this, everybody knows Mamie Johnson has joined us.
So are you wanting us at 2:00, or do you want us at 3:00?
I'd like you to come, if you want to come at 2:00, to tour the library. You don't have to do that, but anybody who wants to be a part of that tour, we're going to make that, that available to you to do. It's real, or we can do it at 2:15.
So then where's the briefing going to be?
Then the briefing, what I thought is we'd walk over to the MacArthur Memorial and in that amphitheater there, which, which we have a big screen there, and we can, you can project the presentation that Bruce will make about the hotel. And then we leave that and just walk right back down the street, we're going to break ground right there on that lot. So the whole thing is within, you know, a block.
So a lot of walking for heels.
Yeah, okay, we will, we will drive you.
Where are you going to be?
Perhaps you missed that memo about healthy Norfolk. Yeah, so get your-
Not a heel.
Just pack your shoes. Come on, girl.
So we'll take a head count later, I'll get back to do that, to see how many of you can be there for 2:00. If it's just me, I mean, or that's, but if some other people want to, if it's just a couple of you, I promise you, you are going to be so excited about this library.
Well, I would really love to do it. 2:00 is, of course, a lousy time for me, but if somebody could arrange any other time, I would love to get into it.
It's gotten to the point now where the woodwork is going on, I mean, getting, final work inside the old Seaboard Building is just gorgeous. I took my Manhattan in there about a week ago, and she was, you know, just really excited about how it's coming together. So, you know, we can certainly do this several times, but if you want to come down, if you want to come through there and do a walk-through at 2:00 on next Tuesday, the 22nd after that, we'll go over to the MacArthur, does that sound okay with you, Mr. Manager? To the MacArthur Memorial in that little, you know, amphitheater there? And it's, clearly we have to open it to the public, there's no reason to have a closed meeting, so any members of the public who want to join us, and the press, Bruce can make that presentation, then we'll walk back, yeah, at 4:30, have the groundbreaking, and hopefully the governor will join us somewhere in the middle there, somewhere. And then there's actually another event over at Nauticus, at the cruise terminal, it's National Maritime Day, anybody wants to walk over there to join another crowd, but I think the crowd for the hotel is going to be significant. One other thing, maybe, maybe you heard this, but the city manager, Marcus Jones, has won the Julian F. Hearst Award for Distinguished Service. We've probably broadcast this several times now, but-
It's on his voicemail.
It's rad.
It's, it really is, it's, it's from the American Society for Public Administration, administrators here in Hampton Roads. And of course, Julian was a city manager here, distinguished city manager, for many, many years. He was the city manager when I first got started, and of course Julian was VMI, and he was highly regarded, obviously. And, but the name is, is, it's really a great honor for you, Marcus, and we're very proud of you, okay? Okay, Mr. Riddick, do you have anything for the, this is, we're not talking budget right now, this is just council concern.
Yeah, I've been noticing traffic in Norfolk, and I think we need heavier traffic enforcement between cell phones and people not paying attention and riding above the speed limit, driving above the speed limit. I think we need heavier traffic enforcement. I noticed that the HRT buses, when they get to the corner of Church Street and Brownton Avenue, the right turn on red, they're abusing that. I mentioned it to John Kippen, he sent someone out to, to observe that, but we need to, and our city vehicles. You know, we're always talking about our self-insurance, and if we had a catastrophe, you know, we'd be, you know, in a little trouble. And I think we need to be, Marcus, I think we need to be heavy-handed, because they have some, you know, large vehicles out there, they're operating, and quite a few of them are traveling above speed and putting us in a dangerous position. I think you should, you know, be heavy-handed with them and see what we can do to make them slow down, but also I think we need the police department to, to do more traffic enforcement throughout the city. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, well, speaking of HRT, Tommy and I have gotten a number of complaints from the moving stops, and I will talk to William when I'm in our next meeting or before, but they've been moving stop, I mean, bus stops, places they've never been before in front of residences. I think the official Norfolk position with them ought to be that before they move them, they need to talk to, to the staff, and I'll, I'll talk to them also, but just to one day inadvertently move a stop from maybe a commercial area in front of somebody's house, there's been three or four, I think, right, Tommy, in the last couple of months, I mean, all of a sudden, it's, and there may be good reasons, and, but we ought to know it, that they ought not just show up one day. So we can make that, ask for that, and I'll also talk to them, and I'm being important. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Two things really quickly, as many of you have read, we've had a couple of articles about coal emissions in Lambert's Point and Larchmont and Edgewater. My biggest concern about this is that people seem confused about whether or not we're at safe air quality levels, and I don't think the article, the second article, at least, particularly clarified that. If we have people in our neighborhoods that are saying they're moving because they're worried about the air quality control, we need to have information out there to let us know whether it's safe or not, but a lot of people are confused. Ron just sent me an email that says we're within the air quality standards, but I think we need to get that out there, we need to know exactly where we are at that area compared to the rest of the city. So if you could do that. Secondly, a number of years ago, Mayor Frame clearly remembers an argument, or a discussion we had up at Highland Park regarding a development there for apartments.
Right.
And we first voted for it, and then we voted against it, because the neigh, yeah, because the neighborhood was very much in opposition to this, it was going to bring in a lot more students and a lot more difficulty with parking. So, fast forward, we now have the same developer putting in single, I say that paradoxically, single-family homes, a number of them on the same property. And those homes have, interestingly, four bedrooms, all with bathrooms, all with balconies, all with locks on the outside of the doors, which are, I believe, in violation from codes. So I'm wondering, what do we as a city have that we can ensure that developers are not putting up substantially our boarding houses in this place and passing it as a single-family home? I know that we are restricted in how much we can do on the interior of a house and the plans, but something needs to be done, because this is really very blatant. I mean, these are not going to be sold, they're going to be maintained by, as ownership by the developer. And I think he's putting in, what is it, eight? Eight single-family?
I haven't seen him.
Yeah.
I've seen, we haven't seen him yet.
He's got at least four done, and the house is already down, I think. They're all to be opened by August. Amazing that that happens at the beginning of summer. So I really would like to know what we can do to tighten up on some of this, because this is a blatant disregard, I think, for our codes.
Okay.
That's it.
Can I say one thing on the heels of what Dr. Whibley said? On some occasions, I have mentioned fugitive dust that comes from sandblasting at the shipyards. And so while we are looking at the quality control over near Lambert's Point, I'd like for the south side around our shipyards to be monitored, and then as far as the fugitive dust from those sandblasting operations, they're supposed to have a netting there, they're supposed to catch most of that dust. And so I think we really need to be concerned about our citizens, and as Dr. Whibley said, and see what we can do to make life better for them.
Well, we also probably need a little letter from the city attorney saying what authority we have in this area as well. The state actually is charged and the feds with monitoring air quality, not, in each individual locality, for very good reasons. So maybe we ought to, council ought to get brought up to date on what our role here is.
But maybe we don't need a role if we're well within safety limits, but we need information out.
Okay, I agree. Avita.
Okay, congratulations to all of you on your reelection, and to Ms. Mamie Johnson, for whom I'm keeping this seatwalk. As you know from my interview for Five Points, as you know from my interview, Five Points is one of my priorities, and I asked about it during the budget work session, and I got my answer on that, but I just want to give you an update on it. Norview was annexed in Norfolk in 1954, where many of the structures already built did not have to meet Norfolk's building code, and many of them were mom and pop businesses and structures from the 50s area. This other day, I noticed another ankle business has moved, the Albano Cleaners, that stood at the corner of Chester Peak Boulevard and Sewers Point Road, and the only thing there is, the building is still there, and the imprint of the sign, and the for-sale signs. Now, that whole row of buildings, they are vacant, and they are one-story buildings, and I just want you to keep an eye on it so that that doesn't become more blighted, to keep an eye on it before and after the Better Blocks event.
Let's acquire the property.
Let's acquire-
Let's acquire the property.
That sounds good. Mamie, Mamie. That sounds good.
Well, also, one of-
Their whole block, yeah. His business out there.
You don't want it that way.
Well, in the budget, there is a new tool for the manager.
Okay.
If we adopt this, this increase in the cigarette tax, that will, I think it garners about 430-some thousand or something, is what I, 437, and for economic development, for use, just for economic development, so some of that money can be available to try to be aggressively to assist in re-leasing those properties, or maybe, maybe we could purchase it, if that's the right thing to do, and clear it and wait for something to happen. Okay? Okay. Thank you. Angela?
I have two things. The first one is in Papal Hall's, at the corner of Virginia Beach, not, not Virginia Beach, Military Highway, and Papal Hall Drive, there's eight lanes of traffic, and I mean, and there's four going in one direction and four going in the other direction. We need, like, a crossing light signal to stop, don't cross, that a lot, because you've got turn lanes coming from Military, the Military Circle Side onto Military Highway, you've got turn lanes coming out of the neighborhood, then you've got turn lanes coming from Military Highway into Papal Hall's, and then into the Military Circle Side, and people are more pedestrian, and they're walking, and we've, I mean, I've seen some people practically get hit, and some people could say, well, they should pay attention, but it's a lot of traffic to, and there's that, the entrance to the interstate, and then the on-ramp coming off the interstate where cars are coming around that, they're coming off the interstate like 70 miles an hour, and I think if we had a stop, don't walk, walk, some, you know, traffic signal there, that would be very helpful in, a friend of mine's husband was killed on Military Highway crossing that very same street, and so I think it would be very helpful if we had something there that would assist the pedestrians and the vehicular traffic in helping folks get back and forth across the street there. And then the other thing is, can we get an update on what areas, Chuck is here, what areas aesthetic improvement grants are applicable to? I've got a couple of people, business owners, that have asked me about that, and I'm just not sure, and I don't know if I'm the only one that's not sure, but it would, since we televise our meetings, it would probably be very helpful to our citizens as well to get that information and know what's available out there. And I'll talk to you about the ones I'm referring to, but, yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Marcus.
It's hard to sit at budget hearings and not want to respond back to citizens, and we just sit up there for three hours and listen to everything, but I'm curious to see what your staff's response is going to be to our citizens, disabled citizens that brought the concerns to. I realize that the things that they brought to us, you're talking about millions of dollars, probably that need to be spent on that, but I think some things, like addressing the bathroom situations up here, which I believe the school system had to change their bathrooms on their floor, we should probably do the same thing, if that can be addressed in-house. We should start looking at some of those items, and, you know, it's one thing that stood out for me with, where the buttons were located for crossing, and that they weren't friendly to those in wheelchairs. I thought that was kind of interesting, things that we don't think about, and they have to deal with on a daily basis. So just at some point, I know you, everybody's recovering from elections and budget cycle and everything, but I'd be curious to hear a response from your staff on how some of that will be addressed. I want to say that I think that our Parks and Recreation folks are doing a great job with dealing with the medians in the school. I know they got behind because of the, the rain cycle, and just driving through Virginia Beach, which oftentimes I have to, where I live in Norfolk, that's how I get to the other part of Norfolk, and seeing that they have medians with three-foot high grass on it, and ours are trimmed down, I think it's wonderful. I do still have some concerns, and I'll bring this up again, I'd like to hear where we are with our gateway initiative. Our entrances into the city, I think, should be top priority, almost cleaned once a week from litter, making sure that the, everything's trimmed properly, that we've got fresh mulch on it, because that's the impression that people who are coming to our city, that's their first impression, and first impressions are always the best, should be the best, because if not, they won't come back. So I do have some concerns, I've seen down in Ocean View, just while the grass is trimmed, there are still some weeds that have been, you know, poison's been put on it, but they haven't been pulled out, some, maybe some replacement of trees that have been hit with cars and things like that, but we just need to stay on that at our interest ways in Virginia Beach Boulevard, the downtown area, and then in the Ocean View area, where we know that we have people who go, come in and out of our city every day, just making sure that they have that good impression every day when they come to our city. And, but other than that, I think they're doing a great job maintaining, I've received no complaints from citizens. Normally, this is the time of the year when the grass is starting to grow, they start growing, and they're, I know they're pumping it out, doing the best they can, being behind schedule.
I just want to ditto what Tommy said about the disability issues with our, with our current building. I think that should really be a priority. All of our citizens should be able to enter the building, use the facilities, and exit the building in the same manner of comfort. And I was, I didn't realize that our bathrooms were not, I know they're really small, but I did not realize that they were not handicap-friendly in terms of the entries and those kinds of, just, just, you know, inter, friendly to those with disabilities. And so I think that should definitely be a priority for us, yeah.
Well, that's going to be a budget consideration, we need to give the manager some time to, I mean, I think the bathrooms was a very legitimate, and then, we've been talking about how you get in and out of here for years, you know, I mean, for, for folks in, in wheelchairs, so why don't you take a few days, and by the time we get back in the budget, maybe you'll have found a placeholder for, for that, as well as some of these crossings that, you know, try to do a couple of more of the ADA crossings and intersections. And Marcus, you know, I park in the city garages all, all the time downtown, and we have a routine where we'll empty a trash can, put it in a clear plastic bag, and set it down, and wait for somebody to come and pick it up. Sometimes it'll sit there for hours. I mean, just, you know, if we're really talking about customer service, the person who empties the trash can, I mean, the bag ought to go with them, or they ought to have somebody there who can come pick it up, rather than the bags just waiting for hours. I mean, that's, that seems like the man, something that can be managed, okay? Simple as that is. Okay. Okay, now, we're going to begin to talk about the budget. What we, what we're, the original round here of discussions will be a give and take, okay? We're going to try to build some consensus around what everybody feels about this budget, which I think so far, you know, Marcus has produced an excellent budget, but if you could think like one issue and put it on the table, and, you know, we don't all have to comment on it at the same time, we can wait until all the issues come out. We're certainly limited on what we can do with a budget that spends $5 million less this year than it did the year before, and so it's, it's very tight. So, but, I mean, every budget can be improved, and the manager is expecting us to try to do that. So Andy's not here, we can start with you, Tommy.
Oh, wow. I was coming off dark.
I do, Angela and I haven't had a chance at all.
You know, Angela, to what?
Well, what? Well, what?
Excuse your leas.
Here, we'll, we'll go this way, then we'll come back to you. Okay?
I'm just going to throw this out there, I think that any extra money that is left in the budget, if there's 1.5 million, should all go to the schools. I think they, they need it, I think they need every penny of it, and whatever we can do, I know at the end, we kind of sit around, and we decide how some of the extra money, if there's extra, is spent in each of our wards, but I think if schools are our priority, then we should make it a priority with whatever money's left, and we need to find ways to generate additional revenue. There's been some conversations about, could you close Madison, sell that property, take that money, and, and give it to the school system, but there's just too many critical needs right now. You just read in the newspaper, two schools have had to close early because of air conditions failing. That's a constant thing that is happening in the school systems. Granby had to deal with that last year, and they've had to spend a lot of money replacing it, but I think we need to be committed to this, and that we have to find ways to help our staff in the school system. I know they're not getting the 2% raise in your recommendation that the city employees are getting. I disagree with that, I think you guys are the ones who told me that we've always done it so that if we give city employees raises, we give the teachers raises, and the other way around, when I said that last year, I was challenged, so I think we have to give them the money, and I hope others agree with me.
Well-
I know we can't give them the 15 million, but if there's any extra, we have to find a way to give it to them.
The, to do a 2% raise for a half-year is like 2.2 million, right?
Yes.
And Tommy, I understand that there's an extra $2.4 million in the school board budget that is over and above before they, that they now have, that, and money that wasn't spent. So there's money there for them to begin that 2 point, that 2% raise. I fully expect them to get it. And, but to the, I mean, I agree with you with putting more money in their budget, but if we did nothing, there's 2.4 million, plus there's another $240,000 in savings and healthcare that was not in their original calculations. So there's $2.6 million plus, which they could apply to a 2 point, 2.2 of which could go to teachers' raises, and still have another $400,000.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm with you, if there's extra money, I'd send it to the schools. All right, Angela?
I, I agree, I think that whatever overage that we may have in our budget would be well-spent on the schools. I will say that, you know, I like Dr. Kane, I think he's doing a great job, he just doesn't have a magic pill, but I, I think he's done a good job, and Dr. Houston as well, but I agree with the Federation president that when they made their level funding budget, they should have included their teachers and not made it a priority of ours to take care of their teachers. I, I totally agree with him on that, but whatever, whatever the overage is that we have, I think that we need to assist them in their shortfall. The other thing is, and I don't, I didn't put a sticky note in here for it, the amount of money that we spend on outside counsel, we spend a lot of money on outside counsel, and I'm just trying to figure out why we spend so much money on-
Did you describe outside counsel?
Out, when we have outside legal counsel.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, outside legal counsel.
I thought you meant counsel was going outside.
No, no, no. I didn't. You are.
Outside counsel.
So counsel with an E.
Yes. Outside legal counsel. I know we have a great legal team, and I think the staff is, what, 18, 20 people or so?
19 lawyers.
Okay, we have 19 lawyers.
Three dedicated to social services.
Okay.
Two to prosecutions.
Okay. So we have 19 attorneys, yet we spend millions on outside legal counsel.
I'd be-
I'm just curious.
Happy to give you that number.
Okay.
Millions is just not right, I don't know where you got that number from.
Okay.
The pilot, our friend, sometimes reviews this, the last time they had a review, we were-
Pilot is not our friend, but go on.
We were the lowest, and my friend at Virginia Beach, Mark Stiles, when I was asked how it is that we're so much lower than everybody in the region, thanked me for not throwing him under the bus, and what I said then to the pilot is what I'll say to you now, is that from time to time, a locality doesn't have any choice but to hire outside counsel, that we're governed by a provision of ethics, and so that our coverage provisions in our code prohibit us from representing somebody when we have an ethical conflict. And there are also areas that we don't cover with 19 people, so that we cover our day-to-day business, but a patent or very many items that just don't come to us on a regular basis, we don't do. So, I mean, I can get you that data, but we're kind of proud about our stinginess on having to use outside counsel.
Well, it looked like a lot to me, so I would greatly appreciate that information, to see the comparison.
Sure, I got it for you.
Thank you.
Avita.
Oh, okay, some of my issues that I brought up before have been addressed in this book that you gave us from the inquiries, and of course, I say ditto to the teacher, the teacher salary raise, which the mayor sees covering what they have over there already, and any overage going to the schools, but I think the schools sometimes services that they can get through the BSBA, they need to use those services, because the BSBA does have some services that they can use for free since they are members of the BSBA. And I noticed you addressed the, the Barrow Park Boxing Center in here, but I didn't see the children.
Okay. Children's park. Yeah, you know, at some point, we have to talk about the boxing center, because, first of all, it grew into more like a community center with a couple boxing rings. It got to be like a four or $5 million prop building, when we started off with really a boxing center with a couple, actually, we had one ring, then it grew to two rings, but, I mean, but, but in order to build it, the soil conditions out of Barrow Park are such that we'd have to tear down the old property and then build a new one on top of. to tear down the old property and then build a new one on top of. And is that, so, I mean, but we, so that's an 18-month process, at least. We may lose a lot of that, of the class, or the, or the, you know, the emphasis behind it by, by, you know, shutting it down for 18 months and building something on top. Is there a better location, more central location where we could put a boxing
On the scope?
Center?
I mean, not under the scope, but under the ballpark.
Exhibition.
You know, we had talked about it.
We'll talk, we sweep the, about years and years ago.
Over by Harbor Park?
Yeah, right under, we have all of that space underneath the Harbor Park.
Yeah.
That is not just storage.
There's nothing in there.
That there's parking.
Right.
It's a little more centrally located, I think. Maybe we could draw from the, the housing projects as, as well as Broad Park and other places. And not just, not just the kids in Broad Park, but maybe build one right there. Really, I mean, really do a nice boxing center. And does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think so. And, and I'd like somehow incorporate the police department.
Yeah. We can do all of that with, we can put some work. In fact, at one time, we were, we were talking about, you know, a workout area for the public safety guys as well. We were gonna put some machinery, some, some, you know, some weights and things like that. We could make it a real hit.
Yeah.
And we could, and we could still, you know, we could dress the old Broad Park center up and still get some use out of it.
Okay.
But then, but bring the boxing piece over to the ballpark.
Incorporate peaks.
Yeah.
But you know, what, what, what's special about this center is not the boxing ring. What's special about this center is the coach and the program that she has set up.
Yeah, that's what I say with that.
She's got tutoring, she's got counseling.
Yeah, she does, right.
So, we can't just put some rings there and say the police can use them and the kids can use them. We've got to be sensitive to the fact that
We can incorporate all of that.
I know. I'm just saying. And it's fine. I, I'm okay wherever you put it, as long as we can get those kids there and you maintain what makes that a success.
And the other thing, too, to read that is, you make a very valid point, because a lot of the children specifically in Broad Park utilize that center. So, if we take out that piece of it that is so vital to the success of the center, the bit, the piece of it that's so successful to the building, then we do have to do something where the children who would come, who are not coming for boxing, but are getting homework assistance or getting tutoring or something like that, we would, we need to be able to, we need to figure out a way to still provide some kind of service, even if we could maybe lease it out to someone who did tutoring services, or some way to make that a good fit. Yes. So, it doesn't, it, it's not like we take that away and then the neighborhood is stripped and they're left with nothing.
Okay. All right, Mr. Manager. Let's go. Okay. So, where, who, where were we? With Mr. Reddick, are you?
Yeah. I guess for the third budget, I'm talking about retirees. Marcus, my question, when I mentioned retirees last week, or week before, you mentioned seven and a half million dollars. Now, how long would it take for that to kick in, or would that be an immediate cost?
No, we, we could take, we could amortize that cost over 20 years. So, just the total cost of having the, I think the question was a 1%. This would be the cost of it over 20-year period. Immediately, the hit to the budget would be about $740,000.
You know, I really, certainly all of us are concerned about the school district and the teachers and raises. But our retirees haven't had any adjustments in the last three budget cycles. And if we could, if it is only gonna cost us $750,000, I think we need to reach for it. And, I mean, you have to realize that they're paying the same thing for gasoline and groceries that everybody else is, and they're not as productive as they, excuse me, Dr. Whibley and Boxley. And they're just as productive, they're not as productive as, as they were when they were working. So, somehow, we could reach that, you know. That's my two cents.
What has been the, the standard of living in the last six budget, or three budget cycles? What, what has it gone?
For retirees?
No. What has the standard of living, what, what do they?
Cost of living.
Cost of living, yeah, gone up.
Okay, for...
In the last three?
I can't tell you that. But if the question is, the COLA, the last cost of living increase you gave to retirees was not the current budget, but the one before that. And I believe that was 2%. The, I totally agree with Mr. Reddick. I totally agree. Here's the issue that has changed since we, the council was approving COLAs. The, it's this counting rule, Gatsby 68, which basically says that if you give a COLA, and it's built into your system, that's fine. But if you don't have an automatic COLA, like the Virginia retirement system, then, and you have an ad hoc COLA, if you have a pattern of giving a COLA, then skipping a year and giving a COLA skipping a year. That's the same, in their opinion, as giving a COLA. The problem is, the rule hasn't been fully implemented. And the one example that we have is Roanoke City, and I think it was in the write-up, where they, Roanoke, where they gave a COLA, and their funding status went from something north of 80% to something south of 6, 70%, I think 68. So, our biggest concern is, how will giving a COLA, even though it's 3/4 of a million dollars, which is achievable, how does that impact the funding of the retirement system down the road? And that's the big difference in the last couple of years. This new accounting.
But the bonding rate is also impacted by that, too, the bonding agencies.
They would love to see a solid retirement system being 80% funded or above, and that's where we are, above 80%.
This would drop us down.
I, I don't want to say that it's, every indication is that it would negatively impact us, yes. Because it would put us in a system where the COLA would be perceived as an automatic COLA, like the Virginia retirement system has a 3% COLA. They don't contemplate it because it's built into the system. And unfortunately for the retirees in this discussion, because we don't have that built-in COLA, the concern is, if a locality that doesn't have a built-in COLA starts giving a pattern of COLAs, they'll just assume that you will give COLAs forever. And that would, that will negatively impact the funding standards.
Okay. Y'all have touched on both of mine, this handicap situation. I think not only should we come up with a little bit this year, but I think we ought to evaluate the whole plan and have a five or six, or whatever year, placeholder in our budget so we can systematically achieve what we need to achieve in the city. I, I don't think we ought to be dabbing at it every year. I think we ought to know where we're headed, plan in, maybe prioritize getting with that group, and let's prioritize and move on. The other thing is, we all understand that priorities are education, education, education. And I'm even, if we could pick off a little bit of money from some of the neighborhood, because the neighborhood know better than our schools and vice versa. But I, I, and I don't know how to say this, but I don't know that what we do will get to the teachers' raises, which is where we want them to go, because we can't tell the school board what to do with the money. Clearly, we want it to go there, and it's almost, I almost feel like we're held hostage a little bit by, you know, we're gonna do it our way. We can't tell them to give the, I would like for our teachers to get the same raises our public employees are. I don't know how we get there without fully funding. We can't fully fund it. So, and if we find these funds, they're still, they're well to do what they want to. But I think we ought to, everybody knows the will of the council is to try to get them the same level of raises that we have. That's all I have to say.
Well, can we? I mean, even if they give it up? No, no. We can't specify.
Only if it's C I P money. You can give them C I P money and say that it's gonna go to C I P because it's allocated.
We keep that money ourselves. We don't actually let them actually write a check. Terry, you have it?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick comments, because I wasn't here the last visit, and I appreciated hearing all your comments that, that you all made. Couple of quick things. Marcus, you did do a very nice job, and, and I very much, as I told you last night, appreciated this follow-up done in such a short time from those comments, and it was terrific. I was very thrilled that we've got some funding to work on the CIT with the police, because I think it's very important that we handle our mentally ill in a more appropriate way. So, I was pleased with that. I asked this question in previous budget cycles. I'm still frustrated by the amount of delinquency we have with our taxes. Are we making any headway on that, or do we just say that's the way it is? Because I noticed that the projected was actually even higher for one of the tax funds.
Yeah.
You know, Anthony's not here to tell me that those numbers are wrong.
Can we just do some research and get back to you?
Okay. And then, you know, I don't get budgeting well, but this reserve fund that we have, that's 42 million, was the same last year, and it's projected to be the same. Where, what about interest on that? Where does that go?
Sure. It's, it's, it's a point in time. So, just think about having a business, and you want to have so much cash on hand. So, it's where are we in the fiscal year? So, June 30 each year, we want to have at least 5% of the general fund.
So, we've put the interest money in, in other places?
It, it is. It's, it's a point in time. We do not have an account of 42 million dollars.
Okay. All right. That's close, man.
It'd be short-term invested, too, in case you need.
Sure, we, we do. We, we do invest the money that we have, but it's...
Somebody, somebody wants to see what they give you sometime.
Yeah, exactly. Well, but still, 42 million, you know, even at low rate, it's still more. Okay. All right. So, I, as you would expect, have a little more to say about education than we've talked about. I appreciated the data, and I'm very aware of it, of how well the city has funded education. And I think those statistics are, are important for us and for the city to recognize. But the real statistic that counts here is how our schools are doing, and how many of our schools are failing, and how our schools are being perceived by our citizens and by the business communities and developers coming into this area. And I don't think we can just leave it to if there's money left over. I've had a long discussion with Dr. King. I've had long discussions with the school board, and Marcus spent a great deal of time with me last night. I think that out of their list from the 14 million, there are, I, I'm not prepared to, to fund the 14 million or to meet that gap. But I think when we sit down with all of those important stakeholders, they have identified things that are absolutely essential in pushing the school system ahead. We have challenged Dr. King and the school board and the school system with their initiative, and I think we are on our bomb to support it. Now, I'm not ready to throw money at bad. I, I think that we should be, they should be held accountable. I think we could even send some, set some benchmarks so that the expectation isn't that they can just keep coming to us and coming to us without performance. But they've all identified teacher development. They've all identified open campus, which actually would bring more funds into our system, because it brings more students back into the system. So, we'd have some different there. And they've all identified technology, which we're doing a good part of with, with our lockbox. The teacher raises, I feel that we can't do for the city, that we, we don't do for the schools. But by that, I mean probably I would support January for a raise. And Angela, to answer your point, no, we can't tell them, Alveda and I know this very well, that we can't tell them where to spend, spend the money. But I think we can have that open dialogue. They recognize what we set as priorities after listening to them. And, you know, I, I think that we have to have that dialogue. And to do otherwise is our number one goal right here in these books, is to bring in revenue for this city. There is not a bigger revenue driver than our education system. And we are kidding ourselves if we think it's otherwise. I, you know, we could come up with a bunch of excuses why it hasn't worked. But the only thing that counts is where we are now. And if we don't support this system with, at the, at the mere base for this initiative, I, I really think we are diserving our citizens. Because it's about all of us, not people that have kids in, in the system. It's about the city and survival. Marcus and I sat down and talked about some ways that we could do this. And I think they're legitimate ways. One is, as you said, the healthcare. One may be that we're gonna, they might get a million more from the state. With, oh, the overrun, the expense that we have. So, I would like you to come back with some options for us on ways that we could squeeze a little more blood out of this term for that.
And we're, we're gonna vote next week.
I know. But, I mean, there's communication that can happen. I mean, is that okay, or?
Sure. No, no, it absolutely is. And he'll, I'm sure Marcus will give us his very best shot, is what he thinks.
Marcus said that he
After he's looked under all the mattresses.
Talked to Sam, too, about maybe, because I, I really like to pursue this idea. I know we can't put in a budget benchmarks, but we can certainly have some, a dialogue and maybe an oral contract of some things that we're interested in seeing, making sure that they're doing some things that are achieving.
You know, within their, within their budget that they adopted, there is a laundry list of things with price tags next to them. And I was hoping they were gonna tell us what it is they thought was, was most important in that list, and they did not.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's problematic in that we say, okay, here's another million dollars. We don't know where they're gonna spend it, and maybe, but they haven't told us what really is important. They, open campus, it is a million-dollar price tag. Early childhood education, as I recall, is like 2 million. They, when they came to speak to us at the budget hearing, they didn't even mention early childhood education. They didn't mention open campus.
No, he mentioned open campus. Dr. King did.
When he spoke to us at the, at the budget hearing?
Yeah, because he talked all about the overage for grade. And, and actually, the conversations I've had with them, Paul, they have prioritized it.
Well, you don't, you don't see it in the written materials, and that's, but there will be a finite number as to what we have and what we can push over there. And like Tommy said at the very beginning, to the extent there's any money left over, the one thing we, we seem to agree on is that we ought to push it over to the school system. And, but can I, let me say something. And, and Paul, this is, I know the retirees are very close to you, you know, and they are, I mean, my mom worked 15 years here as a traffic car, as you know, but she never got a retirement. That wasn't part of the understanding that she had when she came to work here. If there's money left over, I'd rather put it in the school system, quite honestly, than put it into, in the retirees for a, a number of reasons. One of which, when, when those folks came to work with us, their understanding was that this was a non-contributory retirement system, that they did not have to pay or do, pay anything into this system in order to get a retirement at the end of the day. They got a salary, they got their healthcare benefits, they got retirement. At the end of the day, they were also gonna get social security. And if they needed to save for their retirement beyond that, then that was up to them to save. And, and I see a guy like, well, and then to come back here later on and say, wait a minute, how come you're not giving us a COLA? Our system never had a COLA in it. And I'm really concerned about making sure that the retirement system stays fiscally sound, solid for future generations, but also for the people who are already in the systems, like the ones that you would like to help right now. The ones, the best way I think we could help them is making sure that the system is sound. And, and not only sound for them as they get older, and that, that it's able to meet their obligations. In some cities in America right now, that's not the case. One of the reasons that we're able to actually borrow money at a lower rate now is because we've managed our retirement system so well. So, I...
You know, that all sounds, you know, sounds pretty good. But the difference is, is that a lot of the retirees who affected, been retired 20 years, they didn't have IRAs, they didn't have the foresight. And you, thank you for the sound. Anyway, anyway, they didn't have the foresight. And, and of, of gas being almost $4 a gallon, and a loaf of bread, you know, $3, and milk and all those type things. They, they didn't know that. And certainly, we all want our retirement system to be as close to funded, fully funded as possible. Last year, Portman borrowed money to make sure that they were, you know, fully funded. I really believe that while, you know, we, all of those things sound good, we still cannot forget the people whose backs this city was built on. And that's just always gonna be my position. So, that's it.
I like open campus. I really like that concept in bringing the children who are over age for grade out of this, out of the traditional public school and putting them into a special school, if you will, a, a different kind of environment, I guess is a better way to put it, for them to be able to learn and to catch up, get their GEDs. to learn and to catch up, get their GED or whatever the case can be. And I agree with Teresa. I think that the school board has given us priorities in what is important in talking to some of the teachers and in their lack of professional development. I think those things that, you know, they're very important. I would like to have the school board maybe give us an assurance of some kind that, you know, this is what they have intentions of, you know, if we give them extra money or if we give them more money, this is what they have intentions of using it for. And that would be some sort of a good gesture from them to us as to how the money would be spent to satisfy us. I also agree that, you know, my mom was a school teacher and if she were still alive, she'd be dependent upon her retirement. And I can... I agree with you, Mr. Riddick. I can guarantee you she did not expect... When I was getting my driver's license, gas was eighty-nine cents a gallon, and I could ride all week for five bucks. And I know that she did not... Would never have expected gas to be.
Is that our... I mean, are we supposed to backstop that?
I don't know that we can ever backstop.
We made a promise to these people, and we are fulfilling it.
But I don't know that we can ever backstop the whole thing. It's like with the schools. We've asked the schools to tell us what we needed, what they needed, and I think to some degree, we backed ourselves into a corner there because they told us what they needed, but we didn't count on the state pulling all the money from them. But I think that with the retirees, we owe them something, something. I mean, I don't know how we... Maybe if it's not a full two percent in order to work with the schools and the retirees, but if it wasn't for the retirees, none of us would be here. And then we still have to look at the next generation, and that's where our schools come from. So, I don't know where the happy medium is. That's why you make the big bucks. So, you can figure that part out, but I think there should be some kind of happy medium to maybe not making everybody happy.
It's going to blow a hole in your...
Give us...
Funding for the retirement system.
We have heard from our commission that we have for our retirement, and they said any type of COLA would devastate... This is not in any way a part of their extramarital tables. And so, we cannot set these people up to keep our program solvent and then go behind that plan.
I know. And I was at that meeting, but I'm, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, we're pushing down the road. Fifteen years from now, we could leave this system bankrupt. We can't... We can't... I can't... I'm not going to vote to take that chance.
We can't become Detroit.
You know what? As I listen to who's talking around the table, there's people who have a loaf of bread under each arm.
You're right.
Yeah.
You have to say that once a year, don't you?
I'm just saying, you know, live and let die.
And there's ways to do that, too. You could also offer a one-time stipend. It's not going to blow a hole in the retirement system. I just wanted to add, too, that one of the numbers that's always thrown out is enrollment. You guys like to show that graph that shows enrollment declining in the school system? The school system's cut almost six hundred teachers since the big budget cut. In fact, they're cutting fifty-eight more this year because of enrollment decline mainly at the secondary level. But I can tell you, they changed the ratio of one teacher from twenty to twenty-one and a half, and we're losing six teachers at Granby is what we're projected to lose. I'm part of the team that's looking at next-year schedule. I can't tell you how we can function as a school building losing six teachers. You know, you're talking about PE classes that have fifty-something kids in them. You know, you can always make those numbers work, but when you start pulling away those staff members and they're cutting because of enrollment decline, you also start losing the quality of the education in the classroom when you grow those numbers. And the state mandated and put in that personal finance class, they provided no money to the school system to fund the positions that are going to teach that. So, now you had to pull CTE, Career and Technical Education, teachers that were teaching the business elective to teach that class. Now, you don't have seats there for that. People, the public, does not understand how the school system has been beat up since 2008, when they started cutting the funding. And so, in your... You want the school system to improve, and you want to see these tremendous results. And believe me, they are squeezing blood out of a turn-up with getting those scores. This is SOL week. I mean, you have teachers that are sweating it out now, just hoping that those kids are going to perform well on those tests with limited resources. I mean, there's only so much that you can do if you don't have the funding to help back that, or if you have a class that has thirty kids in it instead of twenty-one. And it's very... It's hard, and you're asking a lot from the staff right now, the teachers, and you want to produce those great results and not give a, you know, something that... Money to something that's bad. But gosh, you can only do so much, you know, with it. And so, I think we need to respect the fact that they have cut. They've made those sacrifices with staffing to address the enrollment decline, but also, just like everything else with gas and everything else, education has gotten more expensive. Professional development is not cheap anymore. You can provide in-house professional development, but if you want the serious stuff and going to conferences and things like that, it's pricey. You know, a lot of... We've cut back on conferences. So, I just wanted to add that, too, in your conversation, what you said as well.
I think we all agree with that, okay? And I... But there is one number in here which says we spend eleven thousand dollars plus a child to educate, you know, every child in Norfolk, which is about two hundred more than the next... I mean, I don't know how... I mean, you deal with facts, okay? I mean, facts are stubborn things, as Tommy said.
I know. But Paul, we're an urban school system.
I know, but I mean...
Virginia Beach, if we only spent two hundred more than Chesapeake or Virginia Beach, it's not a lot to be proud of.
Well, there are five cities there. I mean, we're number one.
I know, but they have different... We're dealing with different issues.
I know.
We have to spend more money per kid.
I know, but we also have less of a tax base, I mean, than these other cities do. I mean, believe me. So, but do we agree on this, by the way, Marcus? The sheriff being part of the public safety step raised, I mean, that was like forty-five thousand dollars. Does everybody agree with that? Do you follow me, Elvita, that... So, that...
Yes, it's department.
That's... Yeah, that's just for the sheriff. That's a forty-five thousand dollar cost. And so...
I think they're public safety.
Marcus, I understand that in rough terms, you have about a million and a half on the operating side to deal with, that, you know, that you'd like us to, like, sort of hold the line at a million and a half there. And then you've got like a million dollars on the capital side, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, we've talked about money for disability, you know, to try to... And we've also talked about some of those disability issues. You're probably going to need a couple more dollars, maybe... Will you need more money this year for Broad Park to get the thing going?
No, we have enough money to finish the design.
Okay. So, come back with a reasonable estimate about the disability... About the... About that. And you looked like you didn't know about the million dollars. Maybe I overstated that for the capital needs. But to the extent there's any additional money, I'd like to send it over to school maintenance, okay? Even though I know we're spending a big chunk on new construction. What, it was like three and a half?
Three.
About three, rather. So, to the extent that you can put another three or four hundred thousand dollars over there, that would be, you know, that would be helpful, too. I mean, with too many of us, the schools have rain coming in the windows and roof. And so... And then now, on the million and a half side, on the operating side, the... Paul's question is, could you use half of that for retirees? Or should we send... Which I think we should do, we should send all of that to the school system, okay? Or, you know, maybe that number is different, but a million and a half is about the round number. So, does... I mean, you're going to have to prepare this budget. You know, Paul, years ago, when we did, we did, like, everybody who made under a certain amount a month on the retirement system, we sent them a check, like a one-time check. And I don't think it counted against us, Marcus.
Something like a bonus.
Yeah, like a one-time bonus for everybody whose check was like under five hundred dollars a month or something like that.
Could I just check with the actuary if that would be something... Because it's not an ongoing commitment, and I agree with you. If that's something that's...
Not a COLA, it would just like that one-time check.
Right.
And then, and that would be, you know, Paul, that would be something right there, right? So, can you take a shot at that?
Sure.
To see? And we'll see, you know, what? We could send them in a one-time check? That's what Tommy... That's what you remember. We did that about six or seven years ago, I think.
And I think it would be helpful that when we do board appointments, that we add that position on to allow the retirees to have a rep on there so that they could be part of that conversation and understand these numbers and challenge...
Actually, do have some.
No, no, they... We don't have an actual retiree on there. The police and fire have one position, but they don't...
Because they remember them, saying they were so surprised.
But I think that would be helpful with that, opening up that dialogue.
Wasn't against it.
Yeah. And Butch wants to go on there, so...
Marcus, the Crispus Abbot's Cultural Center, you took the hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it. Is that because they sold some tax credits or something, or is there was... Are we taking that over ourselves? Is that why?
Well, we have it. It's us.
But I mean, what... So, we don't need... So, you don't need it anymore?
The hundred and fifty thousand in this year's budget was a one-time abridge to get them through this fiscal year. My understanding is they're doing much better than we expected. I will get more information to make sure that we're not doing something to set them up for failure.
Marcus, one place you might find some money to help the retirees here is that, you know, we fund the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance at almost a dollar per capita.
Right.
I mean, I am hard-pressed to see that we get a return on that money. I mean, I don't think you can pull the whole thing, but if you took half of it, put it in their budget, and said, here's what it is, and if you can justify to my council why we should let you have some more, okay? Then, you know, come back and we'll see what they think. But I was talking to the mayor of Virginia Beach today. They're taking money as well. I mean, I think the cities... All I see is these trips that they're taking to, you know, all over the world with... I can't find them... I mean, I just can't find where they brought a business to us in years. I mean, I know, I mean, every... Other communities seem to get a few, but... And I know there's this recession they've been dealing with, but this is an historical pattern. We've been paying in this alliance, and my friends in the business community are going to get upset about it, but times are tough. And, you know, I don't know what the retirees, I mean, what that would cost you to send everybody a extra check, but that's... By my count, that's another a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars you could use, okay? And if you need some more money, I probably could... We could probably find it in your budget, okay? Okay? That's just...
Fair enough, yes.
Okay? So, I'm sorry, Angela, did you have a phone?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that it's really important, since we're talking about retirees and everyone who works for us, at some point will be another retiree. And we do have to think about... I understand we have to think about the system going forward. And I think it's very important that we make sure that we educate our employees about what to expect and to encourage them. There are a lot of people who did work for us who did not have the benefit of financial education. And so, to... I know we have the four fifty-six open workshops and things of that nature, but maybe it should be something that's almost mandatory for every employee to go and get some kind of thirty-minute financial session so that they will know without a shadow of a doubt, we've at least done our part in trying to educate the employees to say, you know, down the line, this is what you're going to... And by the time you retire, gas may be eight dollars a gallon. We don't know, but you have to prepare for that, and this is what the city is prepared to do for you. And you may not be able to count on cost of living increases and these kinds of things and helping them to understand so that councils years from now are not grappling with the same kind of thing that we're grappling with right now. We have the benefit of education, and we can pass that on, whereas we didn't have it before.
Marcus, what about... Somebody talk to me about the bus route sixteen. Is that going to be taken care of?
Yes.
That was one of the budget update on bus route sixteen.
You may recall, when we did our analysis, it was a route that had low ridership. That was a route that was one of the light rail bus feeder routes that we started in 2011. What... Since that time, transportation requirements from FTA have changed a bit, and so, there's a Title VI analysis where it has to be done when you have a potential disparate community that could be lesser served by removal of a route. The analysis was done on that route, and it was one of the first times that HRT has done it under the new rules that showed that the removal of the sixteen would leave a population that was underserved. Previously, what we considered the primary park place or route for connectivity was Route eleven. So, what we have that we've worked with HRT is that we see that realignment and extension of the times of Route four, that was one of those alternative routes that we showed as an alternative for the area that sixteen serves, could meet the timeframe that the sixteen is meeting and still provide the connectivity up to ODU and retain at the other end of Route four as well. So, that's the option that we have for us, that realignment and extension of the hours for Route four that could serve that area that is of concern.
Do you need a funding increase for that, or is that okay within your budget already?
Well, the estimate is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Our belief is that we'd like to work with HRT in terms of absorbing that, because we brought it to you in good faith that that would cost us nothing to eliminate sixteen and seventeen. I'm sorry, there'd be a savings in elimination of sixteen and seventeen.
Okay. So, we're done unless we're...
So, we were talking about the sheriff's department and the raises, but I noticed that everybody else's department had saved money, and theirs was more than a million dollars more this year. What was the reason for that?
We carried the cost of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail in the sheriff's budget, and there was a significant increase in the cost for the regional jail.
Thank you.
I want to challenge the city manager on something.
Okay.
I would like to see our budget online in a way that shows how money is being spent, very similar to how Richmond does it.
Okay.
And I'm not saying you have to start with the whole budget, but maybe you could just take the CIP budget and start with that and just let our citizens have a way to see that how the money's being spent. I think it would go a long way with them understanding how expensive some projects can be, but when you spend that money on the dam out in the western part of the state, just showing how that money's being spent would be helpful. And I know Richmond does that.
Sure.
It's not a hundred percent accurate, but I think it would be great for us to move in that direction. And then, isn't there a rating agency that comes out and rates access to budget for our website? So, maybe you can get an A-plus then if you do something like that.
Does it bring more money to our budget?
Okay, so, Marcus, you're going to check with the actuaries?
Yes.
And see if this one-time check actually impacts the... Our system. And if it doesn't... We haven't done it in years. So, I mean, if it doesn't, then you find a point in there where... Folks, we have some people getting some fairly modest retirement checks, and where that point is, where they would all get, then they would all get a check on July first, hopefully, assuming the weather.
And we used to do that. We used to pay it out of the operating budget and not out of the retirement system, which may also make a difference to the actuary.
That's what we're talking about. We're perfect over here. Right. Okay. Okay. And then, the rest between... You got the idea.
Yes.
All right. Once, twice. Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Paul. Thanks. Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Manager. We moved like one-tenth of one percent of your budget around, by the way.
It's not over yet.
Right. Okay. Okay. Now, we're going to...[1738.63] Okay, now we're gonna, you, we have, what's next? The PPEA?
Yes, Mayor and Members of Council, we have two short presentations and then one closed session item. Ron will give you an update on the PPEA interim agreement. There are, I think, three ordinances tonight that you'll vote on. And George has one update that he'd like to share with you dealing with the planning commission ramp up.
Okay. Okay, Council, we have three items on, on docket this evening. This, of course, is one of the first major milestones for getting five schools constructed here for the city of Norfolk. What you have on the docket this evening, first of all, is a public hearing. No action required by council, but this is a state requirement that when you are in a PPEA consideration, that prior to the execution by the city manager finding, signing the agreement, you must have a public hearing on what was solicited, what was introduced. It is on the non-proprietary portions of the proposals that came from the, from the three bidders, which was, of course, SB Ballard and team Turner Construction and team WM Jordan. They have been posted for some time online that, that we had a certain point in time that we put them out there, but they were also specifically, again, publicly noticed for this. So it's basically to receive comment on who the proposers were. The next item, I'm gonna go to R13 before I go to R12. This is the, this is the major milestone this evening. This is the interim agreement with SB Ballard Construction Company for the preliminary work associated with the construction of five new schools. The work will include these items: 35% design of the five schools, public engagement workshops for each of the schools. We also are including, which is a little unique, but this is allowable, the demolition of existing Campus Stella Elementary School. And in fact, I believe, Steve, we're looking to get on site tomorrow. Is that right? Or at least it's this week. And then what this ordinance approves is the authority for up to $5 million for this phase of the project. We expect this phase of the project to be about 120, 130 days. This will enable us to, by October, negotiate the guaranteed maximum price with our proposed developer, SB Ballard, for the construction. So this will inform us, but with the 35% design, particularly with the public engagement and continued input of the school system staff, to make sure that we can, we feel comfortable with what the guaranteed maximum price would be for the construction, and we can be underway in the fall. Docket item R12 will give that right of entry that I just mentioned for SB Ballard to go ahead and get on-site for the demolition of the Campus Stella school. The public engagement workshops will be held, they will, starting next week, and they will end at, at June 30th. And the idea with these workshops is the flow will be that the first workshops will show the conceptual site plans, the conceptual floor plans of the schools that we have. We had to base all of our concepts in acceptance of a, of a proposal, whether or not we're meeting the programming and what we're looking for in 21st century environment. This will give us an opportunity for the public to see and give input, particularly based in the neighborhoods with the schools there. We will then come back in a follow-up session to make sure that everyone understands that their input was understood, and then we will be off and running with the, with getting to the 35% design. We will actually have these facilitated by the Miles Agency, and that has been publicized starting as, last week, and Lori and the PR team from the school system are working to continue to ramp up that PR outreach. There's a website that's up that will be constantly updated as, as we go through the different evolutions of this next 130 days, Norfolk.gov/ppea. Building the future, basically, is what the branding campaign is for, for this process. So tonight, next steps, adopt the two ordinances, continue design development with public engagement, demolish the existing Campus Stella school, and then in October, negotiate a comprehensive agreement with a guaranteed maximum price for final design and construction. Any questions?
I have three questions. The first one is, I may be dispelling a rumor, when these schools are developed and finished, they get turned back over to the city, the school system, that everything's turned, there's no lease, long-term lease?
That's correct.
SB Ballard doesn't own?
That's correct.
These properties, because a lot of people have been saying that they own it for 50 years, and then we have to buy it from them.
No, it's a city-owned property, and we're buying the construction of the facility.
Two, Camp Allen, is there a guarantee that the federal government is providing that fund? Do we have the 80% match?
We have some steps to take to make sure that it is, and one, this is one of them. We'll work through that, so that, that should, in this process, we feel confident that we would be guaranteed the funding.
But at the federal level, have they already kind of approved this funding, knowing what's going on with the federal government? Or is this another action that has to be, we have to wait upon with Congress?
Tommy, the money is available. I sat in one of these long meetings with them. This money escaped the sequestration.
Okay.
They did not go in there and pick up this, this money for schools. Senator McCain and a couple of them wanted to, but they fought them back. And so that money's available.
The key is for us to, to award a contract for construction, and yes.
And the third question is, it's a little bit related to this and a little bit away from it, and one of the prelims that we saw of design, the Parks and Recreation aspects of some of these school buildings, I had concerns that there was a prelim design for the Ocean View one that showed a football field where we're taking away four baseball fields, and, you know, I know there's a lot to be worked out, but I, I'm wondering, these public comment, comments, these two sessions that are gonna happen, are, is the public addressing the outside of the school too, the Parks and Recreational aspect? Or is that a separate?
The side plane, yes.
Separate process with us in determining what the need is in the public? Because if we're gonna pull four baseball fields away, we need to replace four baseball fields, and I want to make sure that that's happening, that we're not just going with a plan that says a football field's gonna go there. And I mean, I'm just.
Football fields, but, but yes.
Right, I know, I saw it in the drawing, and it was the first thing that caught my, and I know those were all prelim, but I'm just wondering, are those being separated?
They are not being separated.
So the, those public comments are also for?
Yes, for the site.
The Parks and Recreational aspects of the outside of the school buildings as well?
Everything that's on the footprint and site, yes.
So it's not about the academics and the?
It is about all.
Internal thing, just that? It's about it, the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Ron, I know in the old building at Ocean View, there is a substantial-sized bell, bell that used to ring out. Mrs., the principal there was, is her name Holt, or what was? But, but anyway, that bell used to ring out over Ocean View. It seems like that bell ought to somehow find its way into the new school, to where that would be, remain some of the original character of the old school. That would be very, that'd be a great move. Okay? The bell, the bell's there. It's there. It just haven't.
900 pounds of it.
Oh, 900 pounds. We can get a bunch of it, isn't it? I mean, okay.
I know that the designs are forthcoming, but for Campus Stella, at a South Side Task Force meeting this morning, they emphasized the fact that they would like to see this school with an auditorium, a cafeteria, and a gymnasium, all separate, you know, no cafeteriums and those type things. So how we looking with that? Because they had, this is what they have now, and they believe that there'll be activities that going on simultaneously that will still require that. So this is what we need to make sure happens.
There is a gym, there is a cafeteria, and we have, do we call it an auditorium? In the, in the STEM portion?
Scola.
Scola, yeah.
And what is that? Is that, is that, are we gonna have those three separate arrangements? We gotta, gotta figure out how you can get that done, Steve, because this is something that the community is adamant about, and you will hear about it later on as we move along. But they, they drove that into my head this morning, so.
That's the type of info we'll be looking for next week.
They might want to know too, that a lot of new school construction, they've start, they've started downsizing auditoriums. Even Norview, when they built it, they cut down the amount of space because they're not utilized the same way that you and I utilized them even when we were in school. You don't draw the big crowds anymore.
I had a cafeteria.
You had a cafeteria, okay. But your high school went, so.
But that's just a concern I like to bring up, and so we can see how we can accomplish that.
There's a similar room that we, that's been contemplated in, in this conceptual design, and it is called a scola. It is, I mean, I would consider it a, an auditorium, but it, you know, the, the number we'll have to look at.
So I'm a little concerned about these public meetings, because I don't feel that we've involved the public, and now you're telling me 35% of these schools are designed.
They will be 35% designed.
All right, so you've got, so, because my concern is that a great number of people, including me, are interested in preserving much of the school, much of the school at Larchmont, and are unhappy about site planning. So I don't want this to be a done deal when, I mean, because we actually have a community that feels that they've been included.
All we've done so far, other than?
That's fine. I just needed to know that.
The basis of a concept is selected a developer to now. He's the design, the design builder that we're saying we'll want to get to 35% designs in the next 130 days. And so that's why we have the public engagement at the front end.
Great, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
But we did start with concepts, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to talk about one application that, while it did not receive any negative votes from the planning commission, it did have a little bit of controversy attached, and I know that Ms. Williams in particular is, is aware of, of the application. So we want to talk a little bit about DSF. This is a proposal, a proprietary zoning in Glen Rock. The idea is to take existing single-family and rezone it from R6 to R8. The, the property is located on south side of Poplar Halls between Frizzell and Brockwell, directly across from the gallery at Military Circle. Glen Rock is a neighborhood that we have considered for many years to be a neighborhood in transition, and the new general plan designated this area as single-family traditional, so it would allow for a, a smaller, single-family detached lot, or a range of, of single-family detached lots that would include a slightly smaller one. Over the last 15 years, we've had 18 rezonings in Glen Rock that have changed, rezoned, have rezoned from R6 to R8. So the proposal is to take an existing piece of property that's currently zoned commercial along Poplar Hall Drive, and the existing commercial is here, and take some of that commercial, plus some of the R6, and rezone it to create nine single-family detached lots. The, so it's, it's a rezoning from conditional C2. The remainder of the C2 would continue to have the same conditions that applied, and the original intent of that, when it was rezoned several years ago, was, the, the thought was that it might become a, a small strip center. But, so the C2 on Poplar Hall would remain, the, there would then be a total of essentially one acre that would be rezoned to nine single-family lots with minimum lot width of 50 feet. This would allow, instead of four homes, a total of nine. As I mentioned, Plan Norfolk, 2030, we envisioned that this is a neighborhood in transition, and the area is designated as single-family traditional, which allows for 50 to 70-foot lots. The current zoning proposed, the, essentially what's happening is the, the area of C2 is being shrunk, and then the current R6 would be divided along the existing boundary lines of, it had originally been platted with 25-foot lots. And so this allows the, the existing 25-foot lot pattern to be maintained, with two 25-foot lots being combined into the single 50-foot lot that would be built upon. There are conditions proffered. Curb and gutter will be established along the, the frontages. This has been a big issue with the folks in Glen Rock. They have characterized themselves as the neighborhood that Norfolk forgot, and believe that, that curb and gutter and, and some of those things need to be part of, of development, and so the developers propose that. The other thing the developer has proffered is that the houses will go through our administrative design process that we use for the narrow lot program and things like that. It's not going to the ARB, but it's an administrative review process. Planning Commission did recommend this unanimously on a 5-0 vote, believing that the rezoning is consistent with the plans and consistent with the other development that's recently occurred in the neighborhood, believing that the proffers of design control as well as, as adding curb and gutter are an enhancement to the neighborhood. We do, we received two common cards, two in opposition, one in favor, that was from the applicant, the two in opposition. I do need to mention, there was a bit of a mix-up at the, the planning commission. We had about 200 people signed up to talk about another application, and in sorting the cards, one of the cards for this application was misplaced, and so the person who had signed up to speak did not, was not given an opportunity to do so. We have apologized and let them know that they will have an opportunity to provide written comments to you as well as speak at, at your public hearing, which would be next week on the 20th. Glad to answer any questions if you have.
George? If the community was interested in eight homes as opposed to nine, or the developer had proposed 10, and then they relented to do nine?
That's correct. The developer had originally proposed 10, and then in response to neighborhood concerns, reduced that to nine. What the, well, what they did was, they reduced, find a better way of showing this. They simply reduced the amount of the commercial area that is being taken in before this line had been proposed to extend to here, and take in one more lot on Frizzell.
So if they did eight, that would not give the developer the return on his investment that he was looking for?
You know, you'd really have to ask the developer that. My understanding is that the owner of the parcel has a price that they are attempting to achieve, and the developer doesn't believe that he can carry that, that, the, the land cost, the ground cost on fewer than nine lots. That's, that's been explained to us.
We have ongoing conversation with them between the civic league president and the developer to try to work to a win-win by the time this comes to council for a vote. So we're working in conjunction with the civic league president, the senior staff, I gotta talk to you about that also, and the developer, to try, I think we've made some headway with them to try to get to a resolution that everybody will be happy with and get it resolved before it comes to us for, for, I think there's been some miscommunication and whatnot. One of the things that I will say, this particular neighborhood is concerned with, and some others are also, is that when a developer comes and they propose plans, and the neighborhood says, this is what we want, and then somewhere in design review, the plans get changed, and the neighborhood is not made aware that the plans get changed, then the neighborhood feels like the developer screwed them over, and they don't know that design review has changed the plan. And so the neighborhood, they're, they're looking at one thing, and, and they've been working, you know, they're, I think they're happy with the homes that they've been presented, but, you know, if these plans get changed by design review, that neighborhood's not gonna be happy at all. And I've heard that from other, in other cases where, in this neighborhood, where the developer came and said, this is what we're gonna build, and then the neighborhood says, oh, this is great. And then, once they go through zoning and design review, what started off one way ends up something else that the neighborhood had absolutely no idea they were gonna end up getting. And so what I think we need to make sure of is, what the neighborhood says that they like, what they see that they like, if they like it, and it's not, you know, some outrageous, hideous thing, that I don't think they would, you know, that neighborhoods wouldn't agree to anyway, but if they like it, then who are we as a city to change it if it's something that really? that really does fit into the character of the neighborhood? So that's one thing that, especially with this development, I would be very, very concerned about, is that once this, you know, if this goes well, and it gets to design review, that the same houses that the developer is proposing to build are the same houses that actually get approved by design review and get built, and get built. Because that's very, very important.
In that scenario, they shouldn't even go through design review. They need to, they ought to have another look at it, but why send it through if we're not going to, you know what I'm saying? I mean, why put them through that if you're going to?
That's true.
I want to know what 200 people.
Because, I mean, if they change it, they ought to have to come back. I don't think we put them through that exercise, if, no matter, why ask, why wait?
I would like to look into what you've said. I'm not familiar with any situation where our administrative design review has made a design worse.
Okay.
In every case, we've, I believe we've improved it dramatically, so I would, I'd like to talk to you about this.
And all I'm saying is, what you may, what someone in design review may think is an improvement dramatically, based on their opinion, may be different from what was actually presented to the neighborhood, that the neighborhood liked for their neighborhood that they have to live in every day. And so, that's all I'm saying. We need to just be consistent with what we tell people they're going to get, and then just because somebody thinks it's different, or it's better, it may not be better for the community that it's actually going to be built in.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a closed session?
Yes.
Okay, quick, okay.
Members of council, a closed meeting, May 13, 2014, at 6:47 PM. For the purpose set out in Clause 7 of the Virginia Freedom of Convention Act, we have its consultation with the city attorney regarding one legal matter concerning a real estate title issue in the Ocean View area. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protigere?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Stagel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And Terry says aye.
Yeah. What'd you say?